Good morning. I'd like to welcome you all to the regular session of the Board of Supervisors for September nine, two thousand and twenty-five. Go call, please.
Brandt.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Paul.
Kurttenbach.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
Would everyone please join us for a moment of silence as we reflect on our actions here today? Please join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one is the agenda received as proposed here in minutes.
Sub move.
Then moved and seconded on, favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, the agenda is received. Item two is public comments. Is there anyone in the room today that has would like to speak to the board? Please step up to the podium, your name and address.
Eric Spacey, office four eleven, Omni Street. Basically, what I'm here for is the last five words a little bit just said in my pledge of liberty and justice for all. I have been coming down here for well over ten years now about criminal activity. And the reason I'm back here today, I just left last Tuesday having a court appearance, having to have a court appearance of farmland that I had been to Bryan Williams about over the last five years, at least fifteen times, and contacted him through correspondence and called. I've explained to him I'm the administrator over in the state, a hundred and nine acres of farmland, so we're probably close to one point five million at the time. We got less than three hundred thousand dollars because the judges have not followed protocol. They have not gave us under the constant Fourteenth Amendment to the Constitution due process. We've had three different administrators. Out of the three different, I'm the third one. Out of the first two, they did not allow the heirs to even be a part of selecting the administrator. I don't know how much you know about probate law, but that's very critical. It could cause families to erupt and blow up when they find out that an aunt who didn't have a mental capacity to understand the documents she was signing had just sold their farmland for less than three hundred thousand dollars without them even getting a notice to appeal. The judge has said we signed a family settlement agreement out of twenty-nine heirs, three signed. I want to go back to case nine nine one four six one two, which I've been to the Tony Thompson gun, the county attorney, the past county attorney, where a person went in the restroom while my daughter stuck his finger in her vagina and threatened to kill her mother. What I'm taking that to is ninety-nine, that's what changed the whole family dynamics of our family and scared people. I just can't be scared. Do you understand what I'm saying? Some can, some can't. I'm gonna bring it to you, and I love doing it now. It's a sickening thing to become a part of this. What I'm asking you to do is to look into the ongoing criminal organization, which does involve some of our infected officials and judicial and definitely some of the police. They have my son caught up in what goes back to decades of corruption. And I'm speaking on my son and speaking for him because he was a little boy when it started. They used the streets to get him out there, and his mama played a part of it, who was working along with the police. This is serious concerns that I have and need to be addressed ASAP. I'll get that.
Anyone else that has public comments that would like to speak in the room or online? Okay, we'll move on to years of service awards to employees with twenty or more years of service.
I'd like to recognize those with twenty years or more of service to the county. The first one is Shereen Northup with the Conservation Department. She has been with us for thirty years.
Would you like to say anything and speak to?
Thank you. It's been an experience, some up, some down. But like Mike and I have talked about over all these years, you know you're getting older when you're renovating and modernizing things you helped build. Thank you.
And the other three, I'm not not present, but we still want to recognize them.
Nicholas Smith, the rest of these are from the Sheriff's Department. Nicholas Smith with twenty years, Heather Dolan with twenty years, and Zachariah Barkley with twenty years.
Please extend our appreciation and congratulations for their work.
I will.
Moving on to item four, presentation, National Cattle Congress for fiscal year twenty-five marketing funding using September two thousand and twenty-four National Cattle Congress Fair. Jim Cook and Deb Bullen.
Jim Cook, GM of the National Cattle Congress. I just kind of do a little educating because we've done some studies recently through the state of Iowa, and I think it's important for for this board to understand how important the fair industry is to Iowa and our county. So we are members of the IEFE, and that's the International Fairs and Expos, and the Association of Iowa Fairs. And together, we conducted a survey on the economic impact with the one hundred and six fairs that take place in Iowa and how much impact they actually do. And it was pretty astonishing once you found that number. And it was just a if this was put on by the IEFE. And their impact for the one hundred and six fairs just in Iowa alone is one billion, one hundred eighty-eight million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars impact on from just fairs in Iowa. And everybody asks, well, there's a hundred and six fairs, there's only ninety-nine counties. There's some fairs, as in us, we have two fairs. There's some other fairs that have two fairs at all that also doing their their founding. Polk County is one, it's got the state fair plus the Polk County fair. They actually use the state fair grounds as that. So that was pretty astonishing once we saw that and all the hard facts that were put on by the International Association. So and what we don't realize is one of those six, hundred and six fairs is right here in our county. And we put on two different fairs, and our impact of that study from our fair is two million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars. Just with that, we saw last year with our assistance from the funding that we received from you guys, it drove our, we had an increased drive of sixteen point five percent over the year before in two thousand and twenty-three. So evidently, those dollars did help, and that's what we wanted to find out. And we took through all that. But just with that generated dollars, just with that sixteen point five percent, that generated an impact of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So the twenty-five thousand we got from the county here to help us with marketing worked. And we really appreciate that time, and we look forward to getting in the future here if possible. Just this last weekend, I wanted to let everybody know too how important our fairgrounds is. Just this last weekend, we had an equestrian event. We're probably the only ones that do equestrian events. And that was a horse training tool that this gentleman brought in, and we did a study on that for this weekend. Just in Iowa alone, we had sixty-three counties visit Blackhawk County during this weekend and spend the weekend with us. And we saw twenty-six different states that drove to Waterloo, Iowa to attend our fairgrounds to see this event. That was pretty astonishing on our end, too. We didn't expect that. There was also one from Canada that drove to Blackhawk County to attend our fairgrounds. So we should be more pretty proud of that because we're unique in this area. And we know that there's no other venue like ours that could have done an event like that this weekend that drove those bodies here and spent the weekend with us. We haven't done an economic impact study on this weekend's event yet, but that's something we're going to be working on too, just to see what impact we did have on that. So other than our fairs next week, September seventeenth through the twenty-first, you're all welcome to attend. We have all kinds of activities, or if you feel like judging a few competitions, I'm sure we could work you in somewhere, from pies to chili, to cakes, to cookies, to whatever you would like to do. I think there might be even a few slots open in our dairy milking competition. If you're welcome to join that, I can maybe pull a few strings and get you in if you'd like to attend. Don't be afraid to, and we'll get you in the lineup. So that's about all we had from us. I don't know if you had anything else to add or...
Jim, I was gonna say, if you'd send that information, please get it. But I was gonna say, if you'd send that information to us, it'd be helpful to have us to have the number.
I can. I can do that. These were just numbers that we got from just this last weekend from the IEFE and the Association of Iowa Fairs, and we thought that was really important to, you know, how important fairs are into this industry in Iowa, let alone and then right here in Blackhawk County as well. So, yeah, we did that study from the Association of Iowa, and yeah, we'd be happy to send it to you. Yeah, it was pretty astonishing once you start putting hard numbers to it. And it took us an entire year to do it because fairs go throughout the year, and we're the last one in the state of Iowa, so they had to wait for us to get done. So, but yeah, that was pretty amazing to see that, though.
Jim, this is...
We interviewed three different companies for our marketing partner, and we selected a local one that we've been working with. We asked them to do a more family-friendly drive this year. I don't know if you've seen any of our advertisements on TV, but it's gone from what I call the WWE hard-hitting approach to a very family-friendly oriented approach. They also changed our logo to a cow. They have seen the cow in different colors. We're also hitting social media harder. We looked really closely at where those dollars are being spent, asked them to reallocate some of those dollars based on what we see as the more prevalent ways to get to people, including hitting social media harder and backing off some other things. But we were really working hard this year. We also attended eight parades with our queens and little misses. That was a huge hit. People that saw us, and I rode on the float. Sometimes I sat on the float and passed out candy or whatever. I saw people, connected with people, and saw people go, oh, cattle congress, we need to go there. So I saw that as another very low-cost approach to marketing and looking at our marketing dollars smarter, so we're not working harder, but working smarter. So we do have a different approach this year that I think will really pay off.
So this is a little bit about this year's fair as well as what we've done previously?
Correct.
So how is it different? I mean, you're talking about the family-friendly approach now this time.
So the state fair and the Clay County Fair take a more, oh, look at the great food, and I'm running around, you see kids, and you see the animals, and you see those sorts of things, rather than our approach in the past has been very event-oriented like the rodeo or the concerts. This is more come to the fair and have an experience, have an experience with your family, not just come to a concert. So it's a little different angle, but more appealing to probably women and people with children and grandchildren to, rather than something that's more hard-hitting, which I think goes to more of an individual person approach. So I just think it's a different angle and one that I have seen be very successful at the state fair and the Clay County Fair.
So the company that you selected to for this year, is it the same one that was used last year, and you're just changing the approach?
It is. It is. But we asked them to change the approach. We, very specifically, and they showed us what they could do with the logo, and so we went ahead and went with them and changed the approach. And Jim's been working very closely with them. You'll see billboards with the cow logo. You see, I've seen the TV spots, the ads that are, again, more family-oriented. It's just a totally different approach. They've really been hitting our social media hard. If you go to our Facebook page, you'll see just post after post with the same theme, the same colors. Some I've thrown in for some other things that are different than that, but really driving it hard, and they're all scheduled out. As administrator, go in and can see all these ads scheduled out, and they're being very successful. Looking at the analytics of those, it's driven the numbers up, and it's been, Jim announced his retirement, and that's probably the biggest, which is later, he says this is his last fair, it's not imminent, but it got a huge, it got huge numbers, numbers we don't usually see. That actually has been a good marketing driver. But I think you'll see a totally different look, a totally different approach, very consistent, and I think it looks better overall, and I think it'll be more effective.
Well, good that you have some of the numbers that you're comparing to last year, I guess, to see what kind of a bounce we get maybe and with Mother Nature's help.
Like I said, we appreciate your guys' help on this. Can't be told without us. You know, if with your support and support of the community, it could make this a great event, and it's here for...
And it drives market, it drives economic impact. It isn't just about going to the fair, it's about bringing tourism to the county, bringing tourism to the cedar value, economic impact.
I'll reach out, see if I can make one of the judging spots work. I love judging other people's food, so.
Do you like chili?
I do.
Oh, there you two go. I will send you both an email about that. Very good.
Yeah, I know when it's the milking day.
Look, Davis is turning my...
Yes, I'm sorry, David.
Yeah, Deb, I was just hoping, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
All right. Sorry, and I apologize, I'm driving on the highway in Wisconsin right now, so I'm not gonna turn my camera on. But Deb, if you could, maybe in October, just sort of send the, a wrap-up of sort of the breakdown of this year versus last year. I can certainly tell from you guys' social presence that you have made an adjustment. I think it's a very smart adjustment, and I'm proud that the board could help support with those marketing dollars. But if you could, yeah, just send us something in October, you know, once you guys have an opportunity to sort of unpack the two thousand and twenty-five cattle congress, the two thousand and twenty-five fair, I think that would be really helpful as we get ready. We're always getting ready to budget, and so just making sure, right, that we're getting as much juice out of the squeeze on that investment and just being good partners, I think, and getting those reports as soon as you guys, you know, realistically have them wrapped.
Yeah, Tavis, this is Jim. That might be closer to November, since we're the end of September. It takes about a month, month and a half to close that fair.
That works.
We'd be glad to find out as soon as it's over.
Perfect, perfect. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I nominate Rich for the cold plugs dunk pink?
I don't think we have one this year, so that may be next year, but we could line that up. How's that? And then Jesse can come in, too.
Yeah. I like that picture of you milking the cows. Yeah, we have some openings.
I'm a corner dairy princess. If you need any pointers, I'd be glad to...
Well, if you think of, yeah, the item's actually on the agenda to approve for today, and so if there is something else you want to add at that point in time, you have...
Sorry about that.
The item for your twenty-five for this year's fair is on the agenda for today, too. So if there is something you'd want to add to that, if you sit down and think of something else you'd like to add, otherwise appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Appreciate it.
Item number five, claims and payments. Resolution that the Board of Supervisors approves expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
Sub move. Second.
Right. Good morning, Board. Our bill payment today is six hundred seventy-eight thousand, nineteen dollars and thirty-nine cents. Out of that, in the sixty forty fund, there's two thousand, seven hundred, sixteen dollars and seventy cents. Our only really large and significant payment this week is that we are paying for the ten X computers to upgrade our elections, so hopefully elections will go smoothly this fall. That total payment is three hundred twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Everything appears to be in order. Any questions for me? This is the resolution. Please answer your names, call.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Paul.
Brandt.
Yes.
Yes.
Item six, we quickly receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Bliss, engineer. I wanted to give you a brief update on our construction projects on the Dubee Road. That's a large culvert that's being replaced by K Construction, their subcontractor who's doing dirt work. They have moved back into the site, and they are backfilling the culvert, and then we, of course, have to put a large asphalt patch on top of that work, so we are anticipating that's still going to be a couple more weeks that Dubee Road is closed. I wanted to show you a few pictures from our other contract that is still ongoing with border construction. We have five bridges throughout the county that are exhibiting some of the same distress that I think I've talked about this before in the past, but this was a standard in the eighties and the nineteen eighties developed by the DOT, and it was not, it was black steel. The steel was not epoxy-coated like it is today. Like today's standards, we would be using, you've seen pictures of our steel deck, or excuse me, our bridge decks before the concrete is placed. All of that concrete is now epoxy-coated, it's green rebar. So you can see in these photos that it is just black steel or plain steel, and as that salt water is, runs off after our paving, excuse me, after our plowing process in the winter, as the salt water runs off of that deck, off the edge of the deck, it tends to stick to the strip edge, and it's causing corrosion in that, it works its way into the steel, causing corrosion, and then that steel expands, and then the concrete pops off there along the edge of the deck. This is very common throughout all of Iowa. We are finding out, the DOT is doing some research on this right now, so it's pretty common now. We probably have a couple dozen of these type of bridges that we will probably need to repair. So the contractor comes in and chips that away, cuts that away, and then places some plywood form work so that they are able to get concrete into that space and then finish it off and give us a longer-lasting concrete deck. They are replacing some of the rebar as needed with new green steel. If you'd like to see any of that work, you would be welcome to come out and visit that. They do have two more, two or three more bridges to finish yet this fall. And then in other work, we are placing mile rock on, I believe, the last district. We are trying to, of course, finish the mile rocks so that it can get tied down before before winter gets here. And then we are finishing our, finishing our last mowing on the gravel road system. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Kath, when they redoing those like that, are you creating a, or having create a drip edge then so it doesn't fall back underneath?
That's a good question, Rich. I am not familiar with that detail. I can talk to the assistant county chair, and we can get back to you on that. Thank you.
Any others?
So, good morning, Board. Elango Lovelace, Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs. And I just wanted to take time out of my busy schedule today to come personally thank Board Supervisors for the ribbon-cutting event that happened on Thursday, and then all the accolades we've been receiving ever since. Just so proud of our county and the leadership of our county. So, Board, I just want to say special thanks for each and every one of you for coming out and supporting that special event, but also funding the new remodel for the VA building. I've worked with eight veterans yesterday, and all eight made positive comments about the environment that we're now working in. Two of them even asked me whether I was a veteran, and so I had to smile on that one just to say, are you really a veteran? But no, I just wanted to thank also the Board Supervisors past because I got an email from Tom Little and our commissioning, our commissioners. I also like to thank Peters Construction and partners and vendors, because all of these people made this all happen, particularly our, the project superintendent, Ben Christie, project manager, Brett Miller, of course, our maintenance department with Rory, our IT department with Al, and then my best friend Gabby, the communications director. Because she has been at the centerfold of everything, from ribbon cutting to all of the advertisement, and I thought that was a huge success of all of the civilians and veterans that came out to support that. But it goes back to you five sitting here, from Justin making his remarks to Tavis making the remarks, to all of the support that you have given us. And when I look at really our mission statement and our core values, I really want you to hold my staff to that, and I'm making sure my staff holds it to it because you guys invested in us, and now the return on investment is to make sure that every client that comes in our door gets the services that you instilled in us. But also, I wanted to thank my staff because they're the ones doing all the behind-the-scenes things. They're the ones who are helping our county create the three point eight million in monthly federal distributions. They are the one for FY twenty-five who made about two point four million in retro pay for clients, claims approved for both veterans and their surviving spouses. I can go on and on, but I'll give you those numbers next month when our quarterly numbers are there. But I just want to take two minutes out of my time to say thank you from a personal standpoint. And even if I'm not the director next year or the year before, you're setting up whoever's gonna come in to, for one, feel at home. And then when we start looking at our core values, you know, collaboration, service, innovation, efficiency, accountability, transparency, and financial responsibilities, we're setting up whoever's gonna come in to live by those core values. So thank you as we embrace the diversity community that embraces our unique assets, positioning our county for thriving and center for, to all to live, work, and succeed. And you've set that up for us, and now it's our commitment back to you to live by this mission statement and the core values. Thank you again for supporting the Veterans Affairs community.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you.
Yeah, very much. And thank you for the recognition. I think so many times of all the departments and all the staff and all the people that brought it together, too. There were a lot of accolades that were thrown around that day, and it was a wonderful day. But I was gonna say, thanks to all of the staff that have participated and helped with that, and you named them also. Thank you.
All right. My name is Mary, HR Director. Just a couple things. A reminder, tomorrow's our department head meeting at nine AM, and then policy review committee is after, at ten fifteen. Just a quick note on department head, one of the things that we are talking about is the Christmas Eve holiday in the operations. Last time we worked Christmas Eve was two thousand and fourteen, and some of the offices closed at noon, so I just am opening that up to discussion. I invite the board to be there to just discuss whether, does it have consistent operations in the evening? So we'll have a little more dialogue on that. But, and then also that the HR office will be closed on Thursday and Friday as we attend training in Des Moines. And then also just wanted to share with you all that I recently attended Public Health Wellness Committee last Friday, which was a great opportunity to kind of sit with them and learn about some of their wellness activities and initiatives. This is an area right now that our office is spending a little bit more time on focusing with wellness and looking at having some kind of survey or focus group to potentially position more wellness plans through the self-insurance fund. So just keep an eye out for that as we present those to the board likely this budgets session. So, yeah, those are the things coming up from HR. Just want to make you all aware of the meetings for tomorrow. Any questions on those? All right. Thank you.
Good morning, Mike Henderson, Director of Blackhawk County Conservation. Just wanted to give you a quick update on the road going into the campground at Blackhawk Park, which I talked to a while ago, got washed out from the last flooding episode. We are, we are moving forward, and if you recall, our goal was to find a quick fix, to a safe quick fix, to get campers back in there to enjoy the rest of the camping season. And then also, as the water went down, we would be able to look at the integrity of the whole, the whole structure to see where it is. Bad news is, yes, we did find out that the structure is not in good shape. The culverts are rotted out on the bottom side, and so a long-term fix is going to have to take place. The upside is, we did come up with some, a very good quick fix that's going to get us back in there again. We cannot thank the engineers' office, Kathy and her staff enough for all the help that they have given us to get us where we are as we sit today, and I'm gonna leave here shortly to get back over there, because unless we run into another issue today, we're gonna have that quick fix in place by the weekend, and we'll have campers back... and we'll have campers back in there for the weekend. And our office staff will be thrilled. The phone is ringing off the wall. This is the greatest time to camp, in my opinion. And so we're going to get that campground back open. But again, thank you to the engineers office and their staff for their help. And that's kind of where we sit. We'll continue with that long-term fix. We're working with Snyder and Associates as I get information. I'm working with Michelle because obviously we've got to find funding for that and we're working through that. But we don't have a lot of information yet. But we'll see where that goes and we'll get it put back together. So any questions at all? Thank you.
Mike, I'm related to that. How's the fishing everything about Hickory Hills?
Shockingly, all those little fish are biting. People are actually catching fish. We've got pictures back. They're not big fish, but they are biting. And people are kayaking and canoeing and starting to use the park again. And so everything is going really, really well. Our fisheries guys have talked to us about how quickly those fish are actually growing. And so, yeah, it's full steam ahead for Casey Lake right now. And we are looking at, you know, that ribbon cutting ceremony right now, again with the weed growth that's out there. It's looking a little tough right now. So we're going to kind of make that decision. We may push this till spring. We're going to have to make that decision very quickly, but we'll see where that goes. But it is, it's, everything is working well down there. So.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
I have a couple of things for you today too that I sent out to you, I think probably go up and game on Thursday. I'd like to send out the capital improvement plan request to all the departments so they have some time and get those organized prior to the budget. And I just wanted to make sure you didn't have any feedback on that. One thing I did think of is we might want to ask departments to identify if their project fits one of the strategic plan priorities. We might want them to tell, to share that in the forums. That would be one change I would make. Otherwise, I don't know that I've had requests for other changes to it.
I was going to look at it, as I mentioned to you, because I guess my concern was really just, as I was saying to you, as far as allowing enough time for everyone to have that time to work on that five-year plan. But depending on where everyone's at in their year and doing that, if we were in a little early for that, because it seems to me like it's worked well too. I know you mentioned that having more time might be help on the backend of having more projects for that fifth year.
Well, about more projects.
Or having it more defined.
Yeah, refine their numbers. That's what I'm hoping.
And I thought maybe after having a five-year plan, everybody's pretty much in place except for anything that's fluid or they want to change out. So it doesn't seem like it is.
You might be surprised how much those need to change.
Oh, I'm not saying, no, I just, that's what I just wondered about that, making sure everybody, because it seems, and this is a question I had even for you or for others, as far as when you're working through that budget cycle, does it make sense to do the five-year first and then look at your budget? Because you were talking about doing that later for kind of the regular time. Or working at it together and then shoving projects into that five-year plan differently in the FDA budget? That was a little question to you or to them.
That's probably maybe a better question for the departments. I was trying to spread out their work.
Well, maybe it's tomorrow, department head meeting, maybe it'd be good to try to do that and see. That's a.
Thank you. And the other item that I sent out was information about the community funding applications. So I sent out the proposed format of the scoring sheet and it's two ways. So whichever you're more comfortable completing, you can use same items on them. And also a summary of the applications. And then the applications themselves are also available to you. So I just, there are a lot of them. I think there's thirty-three or thirty-five, something like that. If, I wondered if there's any interest, if you would like to have a small group review those before you do or if you just prefer to do that yourselves, that's whatever you would like.
Is that something that would be done like through work session or just kind of individually?
You could do it individually. We kind of looked at ours individually.
Okay, okay.
So if you choose to do it that way. We could discuss, I guess, if you want to change it. But you were thinking about another, when you say small groups, others.
Yeah. And I haven't thought that out.
No.
That's who that would be. That would be up to you, just a way to.
Maybe everybody take a look at, look at all of the information and then see if anybody wants to change it. I guess we change right up, but otherwise it kind of falls to us to score it.
Exactly. And then I don't know what, how you want to handle presentations. Do you want to do that during the process of scoring them or we didn't really talk about that previously?
And I don't know what everyone's thoughts are, but I would think too, maybe we'd want to do the presentations of those that are maybe more of a finalist group than thirty-five.
But there'd be so many, we use our scoring to kind of then select what we want.
Okay, that sounds good. And I would say have everything to begin working on them.
Not where we, what was our target date to try to have something?
I think Davis had said around the first of October.
First of October, something.
Put away at that.
See, sign it now.
That was all I had today. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone online?
I'm back. I was here last month, if you guys remember me, about a forged document and a fraudulent check wrote by.
Could you maybe stay later after meeting and meet with someone? I was going to say this is actually for just the department heads.
Oh, okay. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Yeah, I'll come back.
No, thank you.
What time is this over?
Thank you.
Or if you have information you want to leave in the board office, if that would be something helpful. Moving on to item seven, minutes approved. This is for the regular board meeting. It was September second, twenty twenty-five, and the special one, September fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Sub move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, minutes approved. Item number eight is the hearing that we'll be having later during the meeting for ordinance number one four eight, establishing the election precincts in Black Hawk County, Iowa, replacing in its entirety the present election precinct ordinances number one four four and one four five, code of laws. Item number nine is consent agenda. Following items are acted upon by a single resolution. I'm assuming it's to pull one of the items for discussion.
Sub move. Second.
Moving secondly, this is a roll call vote. Whose answer your name is called.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul. Leland.
Yes.
Item ten, contracts and agreements. Resolution to approve the agreement between Black Hawk County and the Iowa State Association of Counties for participation in the ISAC HIPAA program at an annual cost of one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And to authorize the board chair to sign as recommended by Amanda Dezenmeyer, H R Director, and Al Yu, I T Director.
Sub move. Second.
This is an annual agreement that we have. It does help with our HIPAA manual. We have certain entities throughout our county that are covered under HIPAA. For example, our group health plan, the public health department. And most recently, we discussed about including VA in that. ISAC is a great resource for us to navigate the very lengthy and difficult, complex areas of HIPAA. So Mike Trinede, Heather Prendergast have also been assisting with that process, as well as Toki Selby, Taylor, her last name, Jessica Popner, thank you from Public Health. Frank Hardman, Al, you, and myself to kind of keep you and us in compliance with HIPAA. So we recommend it for a minute and we'll bring it back each year.
Are there any questions? This is a resolution. Whose answer your name is called.
Paul.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes. Item B, resolution that the contract with the National Cala Congress for marketing, funding, and amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for the fall twenty twenty-five fair be approved and direct the chair to sign as submitted by Michelle Wiedener, Finance Director.
Sub move. Second.
And moving to secondly, anything you'd like to add? Anything you wanted to add, Michelle, since you submitted it? This is a resolution. Please answer your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes. Item C, resolution that the contract for library services between Black Hawk County and the Board of Trustees of the Public Libraries in the cities of Cedar Falls, Dunkirk, Evansdale, Hudson, Jamesville, La Porte City, and Waterloo at a total amount of two hundred and one thousand and seventy-three dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-six be approved and direct the chair to sign as submitted by Michelle Wiedener, Finance Director.
Sub move. Second.
Moving to secondly, do you want to comment on any of this, Michelle?
Excuse me. This is following the formula, I guess I'll say, in the contract that we discussed during a bunch of times. So no surprises there.
And Dunkirk was able to participate.
They are at a reduced level. And I, I have been requested to maybe meet with the libraries as a group to maybe brainstorm other suggestions. If you wish, I'd be more than happy to do that with them.
Other suggestions?
For twenty-seven, for future years, not for this one. Because Dunkerton does appear to have by far the largest rural circulation, but the funding is not as high as some of the others.
So meeting with the libraries as a group and not just with Dunkirk?
Right. No, it, they kind of seem to work together.
Yeah.
I would recommend that.
They probably all benefit from the same discussion items as well, it seems. This is a resolution. Whose answer your name is called.
Bryant.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes. Item D, resolution that the amendment to the project agreement with Urban Services LLC for the washroom sewer system pump panel replacement project be approved and direct the chair to sign as submitted by Michelle Wiedener, Finance Director.
Sub move. Second.
Yes, the original contract, we had used an expiration date of June and we were not finished yet. So we, Mike and I discussed that. Ben feels pretty confident he will be done by the end of December. Because there's so many unknowns when it comes to weather, Mike and I are recommending we extend it now through next June. Hopefully it will not take that long barring, you know, unknown weather conditions.
And Ben was going to be, I think, doing some reporting back to us and giving us updates and stuff so maybe we could have a better timeline than when they are.
Yep.
He said he felt though, December twenty-six would be a good date to.
Twenty-five.
I mean, twenty-five, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. You know, he, yes, he does feel that way. I hadn't heard from him about how many they got done last week, the week before. I think they've done eight. So he's got some people and they're gearing up to get that completed now.
I would like to see Ben here in front of us in person.
I was hoping he was going to be on today, but he didn't.
Anybody know how large his crew or how small his crew is that's doing the work up there?
He told me that he hired two people to help with it right now. So I would assume it's the three of them.
But okay, so up until then, it was just him?
Yeah, it's a, it's a small business. Yeah. I think he does have people that help him occasionally. I don't know that he has others that are full-time.
Any other questions? And honestly, we all want that work done, so as soon as possible. So I'd be great to have it for that. This is a resolution. Please answer your name is called.
Bryant.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul. Leland.
Yes, he's there. Did he say yes? Oh, okay.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah.
Other business. Item A, resolution to approve the abatement of property taxes for the September twenty-five, March twenty-six installments for parcel eight nine one three dash two five dash two seven nine dash zero zero six, located at sixteen forty-five Lafayette Street, Waterloo. And the owner is the Northeast Iowa Food Bank for a amount of eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Sub move. Second.
Barbara is here today. You want to speak to it a little bit? I don't know that anybody knows who's going to and it'd be good to hear an update probably on your project and where you're going and.
Um, yeah, this parcel, the parcel across the street and two houses were purchased by us a year and over a year and a half ago. But because of the timing, we're required to pay taxes on it. We're still paying taxes on the houses. Those two houses will be moved to another part of Waterloo probably within the next month. And then they'll be sold by a private developer. So we can make way for expanded parking where the food bank site is. This abatement is for the building on the corner that's being used for storage for us. Food safety is one of our priorities at the food bank. And there's a lot of items that we have that we can't keep in our food warehouse. So we're using it for that, for repairs, all those kinds of things. And so we're asking that you abate the taxes on the big parcel, knowing down the road that, that the two parcels next to it will go back to grad. Well, actually, they'll be cemented for a parking lot for use in the facility. But we would appreciate it if you could abate these taxes because it will help us and all the money goes back into the mission of providing food. Just a quick update on our construction project. We're underway. They should be, they've dug footings. They're putting in drainage right now. And they should be starting on filling new pantry and loading dock here in the coming weeks, as well as the expanded office area for community space. And then they'll do the internal renovations after that. So the project will be done a little over a year from now. It's about a fourteen million dollar project. But unfortunately for forty-five thousand food insecure people in Northeast Iowa, we need, they need our services so they can stay in their houses, houses and have food to eat and all of that. So any questions?
Barbara, what's the long-term plans for the garage where the office is?
We're going to just keep that garage. We're just going to, right now, keep it as it is because of all the stuff that we have, that we need for the facility. But because of our A I V requirements, which is American Institute of Banking Food Safety, they can't necessarily be stored in a food warehouse. We're also doing repairs in there, like on our fireplace, Alajaks, things like that. So.
So long-term, you probably look at saying, keeping that building the way that it is?
For now, yes, yes, correct.
I was just going to comment, Barbara tried to talk about this property and the abatement of it about a year ago and asked to meet with, I think it was TJ, maybe Tim, myself, I can't remember who else was all involved in that. And the result of the meeting at that time was that she, taxes couldn't be requested to be abated until the actual statements were mailed out and we knew what the taxes were. So she did try to get ahead of this somewhat and have any discussions. It's just that it took this process.
Yeah. It has, it goes back to that you have to fill out the paperwork before February fourth. Like a year before the taxes are, I mean, you guys know the formula better than I do. But anyway, this is just, we're back a year later asking for abatement on this. We didn't pay the taxes last year.
And this is the only one.
Yes, this is the only property right now.
Everything else.
Yep. We have filed for tax exemption going forward.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Barbara was just curious. So food bank purchased that whole part, was it two houses with the business property?
And a lot across the street because that's what the owner, the owner approached us about four years ago about purchasing all of it. We finally closed about a year and a half ago when he retired. And so we, we, he wanted, he wanted it to come to us because his parents were involved with the food pantry in the eighties. And it was close and personal to him. And so we decided that, okay, this is the right thing to do. And it's working out well for us.
Yeah. Which are the two houses that are going to be moved?
The two closest to the build, this building. And then the, the third house is staying because we don't really need that. And the fourth house is actually being torn down. We just bought that. It's being torn down as we speak because of drainage, because of the drainage that they need for the property. It was a city of Waterloo requirement. So that building is coming down so they can have the right amount of drainage for the whole property, I guess, for the whole area. That makes sense. So we bought three of the four.
Okay. So then they're going, a private developer bought those?
Uh, yeah, yeah. We gave them to a private developer to move and he's doing that like within the next week. Actually, the basements are already dug. They're over by Rudy's Tacos. And he'll be moving them over there soon. Um, and he'll be moving them over there soon. So those two houses will go back on the tax rules.
Interesting. Okay, cool, thank you.
We were able to save the housing, so that was the goal of it.
Now, you see the property across the street is at, next to the Veridian parking lot?
No, it's the one, um, so do you know where the old St. John's School is?
Yes.
Across the street, there's a parking lot.
Yeah.
It's the grassy lot that's right next to it.
Corner there.
He owned all of them and he wanted all of them. So right now, that's just sitting there.
Okay.
Any other questions? This is a resolution. Please answer your name and call.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul. Brandt.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck. Item B, resolution to approve addendum to, to a strategic plan engagement letter con slash contract with Ted Garnett. Original dates eleven-one twenty twenty-four through eight-twenty-two of twenty-five. To include phase two, round two strategic plan work, which includes leadership training and board clarity, role clarity. And those sessions would be from October to December of twenty twenty-five at a cost of fifty-five thousand dollars.
So move, second.
I know everyone received the email, I think, from him and spread me as much as information that we had on the website, so. Any questions or discussion, anyone wants to? This is a resolution. Please answer your name and call.
Brandt.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul. Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes. Item C, resolution to approve using thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars from the twenty twenty-six training budgets of the following departments. IT, Public Health, Recorder, Conservation, Facilities, Roads, Treasure, Attorney, Sheriff, Consolidated Communications, Veteran Affairs, Auditor, and HR to support the next round of leadership university training.
So move, second.
Questions or discussion? I guess, um, I wanted to just say thank you, I guess, for all of the departments putting together the budgets. Yes, do you wanna comment? Amanda, I know, um, you worked to get this together and provide the numbers and the amounts and stuff that the departments were willing to do. As well as HR provided a large amount to add to this.
Yeah, no, I can speak to that a little bit. So we all have, um, budgeted dollars for our training. And this was something that, um, since all of the department head's elected officials have gone through this training. We had our managers go through that, all funded by the board supervisors. We felt it was important to kind of contribute, show how we can contribute to, to this same effort for now our staff to receive this training. Um, it is kind of a, you know, effort that takes time to get to all four hundred employees. So that's one thing that we are going to look at for future budgets. Um, appreciate the staff, um, or the department heads leaders looking at their budgets and possibly putting things off that they may be originally planned for their training dollars. Um, as they saw this, um, be a really, you know, rewarding experience. Um, and how aligned so well with the strategic planning that was recently adopted by the board and rolled out. Um, so with, uh, HR's budget, we do, we ramped up our budget a couple of years ago with the countywide training. Um, our budget now is about twenty-three thousand dollars. Part of that is for H- HR. The most of it is for staff training. So, um, this is kind of got, where we're guiding those dollars this year and likely in future years. Any questions at all about, um, how we kind of arrived at this or where?
I, I did just, and it sounded like you were sharing us, I guess, the HR training budget is a large amount, just twelve thousand some years along. My, um, concern was really then, did that maybe preclude you from using, having other trainings that maybe you'd see needed in your department that you'd really like to? I know you're gonna be doing a lot of work with the program itself and being involved and engaged in a lot of the meetings. You're gonna be a co-champ going forward for your particular area. And I just thought, are there HR areas, I guess, where that twelve thousand might be a bit of a jump?
Sure, it does, most of our, um, so yeah, we won't offer probably, usually we offer at least two, um, like speakers come in. We like to do kind of an assessment, for example, we did the StrengthsFinder assessment, which was really well received. That was, I think, a couple of years ago. And that, um, was, you know, about nine thousand dollars for that, to have it at, um, Hawkeye Community College, um, within the speaker for that StrengthsFinder. So we won't likely be offering something like that. Um, so, but, uh, I do think the leadership, I think this is a good fit for the training budget right now and probably in the next couple of years. But, um, so. We're okay with it for, for right now, and I think we'll continue to support. It, it does give us a space where, one thing with the HR training budget being accounting-wide, we kind of piece together things of what we think are, um, important for the organization. This is nice that it's all under a centralized adaptive plan that's, um, moving forward from the board, from the leadership, down to the staff. So we've kind of been waiting to have something like this to direct those funds towards. And then again, for, um, departments that have their own training budget, we just ask that they kind of plan for that in the future, so it doesn't always fall to the HR training budget. Or that, we may not always have twelve thousand dollars to shift that direction, but.
I saw you in your emails, kind of thinking in that planning for future budgets. This is the time to build it into, so it is not all to HR.
Cause we do like to bring things, like there's the DISC assessment, that's really a lot of, you know, there's engrams, there's all sorts of things that we could bring that people could kind of just, um, discover or reflect about themselves and how they work in the workplace and in their personal lives. Um, but those do tend to cost with those types of assessments and those expertise to bring in those speakers, but, um, yeah, so, thank you for asking.
Well, I'd like to think too, if, if there's an opportunity for a training that would come up in the future or something that might be very helpful or beneficial to us still. Because your budget wouldn't allow it if you read off, and if I guess, at least be willing to consider it at some point in time, if it was something we wanted to do.
I think last year we had with CFU, we partnered with them and bring in an attorney for our whole management training, a whole day. So yeah, if we have another opportunity like that, I would like, I could always come to you all and ask, um, for an amendment or something. But those are good opportunities, um, to partner with other, you know, organizations in our community to bring that management training or employee training. So at a more cost-efficient manner. All right, any questions? So we do have, so with everybody, you know, all the departments contributing, that means we have at least, um, mostly at least two upwards of five, um, department staff attending, um, you know, in each of those categories. And, uh, we're excited to plan for the budget session to hopefully offer this, so that all employees get this leadership training. Cause as we've learned, that leadership's not a title, it's not a role, it's everyone's responsibility and an alliance. You have questions?
Thanks so much for.
Anne.
Thank you.
Yolando, cause we are using the facility out there, um, for all of the training of the new VA. Um, they have a beautiful conference space where they hold their VA commission meetings. And we're really excited to, to, um, bring the staff to that space. It's a great ribbon cutting and really excited that we get to, uh, work with Yolando and offer that as a training facility. In addition to, we've used the apartment in the past, um, out at the range, but this is gonna be a really great space and very set up for our classroom setting. And we're excited to get more people out there, so thank you, Yolando, for offering that up.
We knew there'd be a meeting space out there, but yeah, didn't know it'd be so beautiful and we'd be able to host larger events like this, so I think this is great, thank you. Now, from the funding standpoint, I suppose, just because this wasn't budgeted for this additional amount. I don't know if you've considered that or what you thought about, I mean, obviously, we know there's reserves, but I'm hoping that we have money in, in, in the budget or in our budget. Where this, it's about twenty thousand dollars, but I know that's putting, yeah, I know the year's early.
That's what's difficult about the year is early and, I mean, if there are things that we don't do in the current budget, it might be able to be covered out of the current year somehow. I can't identify a specific line right at the moment.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions or discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer your name and call.
Brandt.
Yes.
Paul. Schwartz.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes. Item D, resolution to approve the opioid litigation Purdue direct settlement settling with Purdue and Sapwood. I am going to authorize the board chair to sign the participation form for saying and to authorize the board chair to sign any other settlement documents related to the Purdue sub-direct settlement in the opioid litigation.
So move, second.
Just gonna comment on this one.
Well, I'll comment on it.
Thank you.
Currently, uh, there are two of these, so I'm here and I'm just gonna comment on both of them. Uh, we do have the paperwork for the Purdue one, we do not yet have the paperwork for the secondary manufacturers one. I've been calling up our litigation council on that. This is just the latest wave of settlements in the opioid class action litigation, which is big for us. Um, Ben attorney, I believe, she's out of Wisconsin. And so these, these amounts have been agreed upon for the class. Uh, we don't know our county share yet on them, but those will be determined based upon population, just like they have on all of the others, uh, up to this date. So this is just the latest, uh, wave of them. And if we, uh, we agree to it, we get whatever our determined share is. If we don't, then, um, we have the option to pay at our own expense against, uh, against the pharmaceutical companies, or in this case, Purdue. Secondary manufacturers, by the way, of what that's worth of lean, those are like generics manufacturers.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions, resolution? This is a resolution. Please answer your name and call.
Paul. Brandt.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes. Item E, resolution to approve the opioid litigation settlement with secondary manufacturers to authorize the board chair to sign the participation form for saying and to authorize the board chair to sign any other settlement documents related to the secondary manufacturers opioid litigation settlement.
So move, second.
One second, any questions for Mike? This is a resolution. Please answer your name and call.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Paul. Leyland.
Yes. Item F, motion to approve Bowls of Food, Bowls of Love food truck to use Blackhawk County grounds on September twelfth, twenty twenty-five, from eleven to one-thirty in the southeast parking lot of the Pinecrest Building, excuse me, located at fourteen oh seven Independence Avenue, Waterloo, Iowa.
So move, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Close sign, motion is approved. Item G, motion to accept the resignation from Jim Bozier as commissioner on the Blackhawk County Planning and Zoning Commission effective September one, twenty twenty-five.
Only if I have to.
Yeah, he's been a long-term member and moving out of state. And so he waited till the last minute to submit his resignation, so he says, fine, I'm ready to go.
Well, his interest first started when he had a zoning issue with us and he involved in the process and we're going out. As far I've been seeing, his, uh, I think he's got Elk out there, um, it's cool.
Yeah, it's insane. He said, yeah, he's been on the other side of it, and he definitely kind of wanted to begin, so, but he's been there for a very long.
I didn't get the motion or second.
He did, he had to.
Only if I have to.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Close sign, motion carries. Item H, motion that the appointments, appointment of Robert Stern as commissioner of the Blackhawk County Planning and Zoning Commission be approved effective September ninth, twenty twenty-five for a five-year term to expire on September ninth, twenty.
So move, second. I'll just say that we, Linda and I interviewed both Robert and Tim. Very interesting. I enjoyed the opportunity to meet them and visit with them in their interest in serving and highly recommend them both.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, great interviews. They had, I think, been somewhat recruited by two or three of the planning and zoning members and told them what the experience had been like and how they valued it. And, um, both had experience in rural areas and construction and different things, so. This is, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Close sign, motion carries. Motion to approve the appointment of Tim Nealan as commissioner on the Blackhawk County Planning and Zoning Commission effective September nine to complete the vacated term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
So move.
And that was the only, I'm moving second, that was the only reason that from not having a five-year term was just complete that term. And, um, we did it when we talked, we interviewed Mr. Nealan and he wasn't certain of the term. And, um, five years was a long time and he said that three-year fit is perfect for him to actually see if he's a good fit and there and enjoy the experience. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Close sign, motion is approved. Item J, motion that the reappointment of Jay Peterback as a representative of the Blackhawk County Board of Adjustment for a five-year term to expire in September nine, twenty thirty.
So move, second.
He's another gentleman that I think we've asked him several times to renew his five-year because we haven't had openings or, or haven't had, been able to fill the openings. And we currently still have an open position on that, if anybody hears or knows of anyone interested in that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Close sign, motion carries. Item K, the one we've all been waiting for. Discussion on AI policy in the Policy Review Committee. See, we've just been.
Anything?
Yep.
How are you IT Director? Uh, I have with me Matt Strong. Um, real quick, just can I give a brief history of how we got here?
Oh, please.
Uh, so with AI adoption increasing, we, we felt that it was important that the county develop the policy to, to protect us and to make sure, uh, its use is governed, uh, and can be used to get. Uh, and so we formed a committee, uh, that consists of Amanda Besamire, Fred Hardman, Aaron Ranky, Matt Strong, and myself. Uh, I think we worked, met four or five times over the span of a few months and developed this, this draft, uh, version of the AI policy. Uh, we didn't, we, we then submitted it for review with the, uh, Policy Review Committee. Um, and we've had our, uh, initial discussions and now we are bringing it for a discussion with the board supervisors, so. Um, I know it's a lot.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's still four or five that it started, okay.
Yeah, and, uh, I guess, um, are there any initial questions that you have for us with this, with this policy?
I can recap it if you would, please, like what those, what you feel are the importance.
The levels.
Yeah, so basically, um, the overall idea behind it was we were kind of trying to bridge the gap between, you know, we're going to look at AI as far as approval and whether people should be allowed to use it, not allowed to use it. How exactly do we go about that when AI is being so ingrained in like every piece of technology that we're using? And what we came to was, instead of doing it outright, like every single person needs permission or not, um, we decided to go the tiered approach. Which basically would mean that if, uh, it's dependent on the user to decide, like, the data that they're putting in. And they're solely responsible for deciding what tier they fall in. So you'll notice on like the second page of the policy is this tier-based system to where they decide what kind of protections they're going to have within that structure. Um, and depending on what kind of data they're using. So when you look at that tier list, that's something that, that can be easily referenced for anybody who's gonna be using it. And then, um, some other pieces of it to point out is that, you know, AI use is like a voluntary thing. So like, we included any department head has the right to deny AI use in their own department if they want to. Um, it's not something that's required to be used. And then we addressed some of like the vendor concerns of, you know, now that people are kind of, uh, uh, shipping these things and all their products and everything like that. We feel there's a, it's a good reason to kind of review some of the products that are coming in. So having some kind of AI committee of some kind to then review, but we're putting ourselves at risk with any of the data that we're putting in. So that's kind of the overall thought points. We look at like the different tier lists, if you wanna ask about that. But that's kind of where we felt where, um, we wanted to be able to control the data that's being put out there and kind of govern what's happening, so.
I was gonna say, how is the oversight for this, as far as you think, how, how, how can people use oversight of it or?
Um, well, we haven't, we haven't determined the, the committee yet. Um, but I think, uh, once, if, if you guys choose to adopt this policy, we will, uh, create the committee right away. Uh, and maybe we can work with the board supervisors to maybe help determine if we want other staff on, on board with that committee. Um, and then, uh, once that hap, once we get that, uh, committee established, then we can, uh, kind of, uh.
Yeah, I can take over a little bit too. There's, um, kind of standardized like risk management frameworks within this, so there's like the NIST AI Risk Management Framework. So it basically, what I think, for one looking at like the higher tier uses, like tier three and eight, maybe even some of the tier two uses. What the committee would do is they would kind of plug it into one of these standardized frameworks, which, um, I'll just a little bit after the NIST, like what they use at the federal level. Um, so that would be kind of where you would like to plug in, okay, exactly what the use case is, do a risk assessment. I'm like, okay, how risky is this, whether we should pursue it or not? And they kind of give the department or whoever's submitting that request an idea of like where we stand on it and whether we should or shouldn't pursue it. That would be kind of the overall idea, um, but it'd be based on a standard risk management framework that we would then plug it into, so.
What departments would you see using this the most?
Um, I think it depends, like, I think any department, it kind of would depend on how much they wanted to adopt. I think it depends, like I think any department, it kind of would depend on how much they wanted to adopt any given thing. I know like IT department has obviously already been experimenting with it. We've had a bunch of AI trainings with different departments over the last couple of months. So some people have been very receptive to it, others not as much. So I, it really depends on department, department specifics as far as their individual use cases. I think we're gonna see a lot more departments adopt it within technology they're already using. So that's why I kind of bring up that as a point of like, they may not directly have an account toward be using it, but they may be using a software that has a component of it that is AI-based that they should probably be looking into, so.
Is there a way of, like a year from now, giving us a report where you're seeing who's using it and how they're using it?
Absolutely, and one of the things to mention too of this policy, you mentioned it's going to be updated every six months. So it is actually, listen, the policies should be updated a little bit more frequently because AI moves so quickly. We want to be able to analyze, make sure we're on, you know, making sure this is still up to date and we're still kind of managing it the way that it should be managed. Because it could change at any point, you know, a lot of this stuff, I mean, we've had UTSL or some of the products were released like 2022, so it's only a couple of years old. So we want to make sure to review this more often than the traditional policy would.
And my first thought was that we put a timeline, that we approve this for a year or something, but get reports. But I don't know if timeline is really the best thing, but reports back so we know how it's being used would be very helpful as far as policy would improve it.
Yep, and, and in the policy, it also says every six months, but also as needed. So if, if something new comes out, new, new version of technology, we definitely want to get in front of it, so.
So that becomes like your responsibility, bring it up for review.
Oh. Sorry, can we help to correct that on that? You know what I meant. That's why it's a draft.
So you'd be reviewing that, I assume, then your responsibility would become like reviewing that on every, every twelve, ensures changes are needed, but it wouldn't necessarily be updated, it would only be if there were.
Correct, we, we review it, the, the AI committee would review that and then recommend changes if, if they need.
And one of the reasons we have gave for a committee as well is it involved in a lot of these risk management frameworks. There actually is a component of those that say they want to have multiple departments involved, like multiple people, multiple backgrounds, not just people with an IT background. So just to kind of comply with that or like, you know, have a standardized setup, that'd be more, we want to include people from other departments. I know we, you know, even when we had the AI committee initially to make this policy, they had a variety of people involved. So that's another reason why it'd be more of an AI committee rather than just refer to the IT department, even though we are kind of once.
The AI, it was a change monthly.
Yeah.
Most you could have to review it monthly.
How does the, I don't really know much about the AI except for what's on the co-pilot, you know. Does it just extract, did you put something in, find this for me? And then it just pulls information from a ton of different searches or search engines?
It works a little bit differently than like your traditional like search engine would. So basically, you could think of it as a search engine that's been like pre-trained with like a variety of knowledge that, but it's like massive amounts of knowledge. So like, say like the entire internet, like the equivalent of that kind of data. It's already been pre-trained with that amount of knowledge, and then it can use. A search would be like something, a tool it would access in order to get more information, but it has a standardized set. So that's why the sourcing and things like that is so hard to do within AI because it is actually coming up with its own information, like internally, things it's already been trained on. So that's the, it works a little bit, it's kind of complicated, but, but yeah.
Yeah, I just, besides kids cheating to write papers in school, I can't, I guess I just have a hard time with wrapping my mind around it. Use it to write code and everything.
Yeah, yeah. So advanced data analytics. So I would say something that, if you're gonna compare this like traditional internet use, right? The difference between like, I could take a Excel sheet, let's say, and have the basic internet be like, okay, can you do this calculation, this formula, whatever? What I could do with AI is something instead is like an input that Excel sheet and say, hey, what do you see in this Excel sheet that you find interesting? And then AI could then actually look at it, determine with its own more creative and, and whatever. You don't have to give it a specific goal set, it can actually just come up with insights on itself. So that's kind of an example of like, it's just a little bit different as far as a tool goes. And it increases efficiency. I mean, I think the baseline for all like county uses, things like that, you have that, that component to it, but you can do a lot of things in the background. So I even say, as a technology support specialist, something that I do, part of my job, is somebody who will call me and ask for help, right? So I will, an example is, I will put in some of the things if it's a more complicated thing. I'll throw that into an AI search while I'm helping them, and I'll do all the fixes I know of, and that'll just be going in the background. And if I get stuck and I haven't fixed it yet, I can look at this list and be like, okay, I didn't try these two things that I think of off the eight or whatever that's there. And I didn't have to sit there and look at that to do that. It just came to me while I'm already talking to the person and I'm already doing this thing. So you can, that's kind of like a little encapsulation, like you can more efficiently handle certain tasks, things you didn't think of, like to edit, like if you have, Al has an example of like an older Excel spreadsheet that breaks, you can have it help fix those kind of things. Like they're, they're, the use cases are kind of astronomical to think about. Like there's a ton of different ones in different departments. That's why we kind of get like generalized training and why we also have the policy and like the tier one use case. I think anybody who uses AI should have some kind of baseline training because they gotta understand a little bit about what they're doing. And, you know, it's, it's available on everything. So if you do Google search right now, you can get a, you know, summary at the top, right? So that's AI-generated summary right there. So automatically, everybody's using Google, is using AI in some capacity. So it's just one of those where we feel that the best way is to govern it in this kind of tier approach of, you know, personal responsibility, department responsibility. If this is what you're inputting, what is the sensitivity of that data? And, and they, they can use the creativity from that themselves and kind of determine, okay, we know what the guidelines are, this has been governed, and then we can come up with if it's useful for us or not. Because it may not be, it's not, it may not be for everybody, for every department. Just important to know that the tools are out there.
So we've been doing the introduction of trainings with, with departments, and the feedback has been great. The interest has been great. And we'd be happy to, to show you guys as well, if you'd like to sign up for a time slot, happy to give you that training. We will also develop a, I think, a kind of a video training, just kind of highlight the general highlights. And the big thing here, and one of the main reasons for the policy is, is data, data privacy and making sure that you're not feeding confidential, things like PII, PHI into it. I mean, that's, that's really the big thing, is making sure that we're feeding the right data and then make sure we're respecting data privacy. And, and that also protects the county.
Tis is having mic issues, and so he has a couple of questions in the chat. His first question is, is the policy fashion after any other Iowa county policies?
Um, no, I don't.
No, we kind of leaned it off more like a federal level. We didn't feel, we did look at other ones from other counties and even at the state level, and we, I, I didn't find their approach, and other people didn't either because it kind of had this blanket of like, we approve, we don't approve. And I just said, that doesn't really work when you're having a technology that's literally being used by everybody. So I didn't want to create a policy that everybody automatically breaks, and like the committee didn't either, so.
Would have the time in the day to approve every time you want to use chat GPT, every different.
Or like Google search.
Yeah.
Is that what several counties do?
So, they can, I think they're, they're written a little broadly, and we wanted to be a little more, you know, defined, and that's why we went with the tier approach. And so tier one handles all those general uses. And that way, we don't have to police them all because we would be here forever.
His second one is, are there specific insurance policies that we will need to adjust as we formalize the low-suction kind of AI?
Certain insurance policies, I would say, like most, so if you're talking about like general cybersecurity, things like that, cyber insurance is essentially protecting data. This is pretty much the same thing. So whether there's specific things that are offered in the future, I don't know. Those things may be in flux or changing, I can't speak on that 100% for sure. But I mean, essentially, what we're talking about is data privacy here, you're talking about data privacy there. So it's probably, well, it's encapsulated in the same stuff, but I can't say for sure, that'd be a question.
I have not noticed a trend of insurance policies changing and separating AI coverage versus cybersecurity. To me, I would agree, it kind of falls under the same umbrella. But who knows, maybe they may do that in the future.
Well, I remember another business was involved in, they had a cybersecurity on HIPAA stuff. Is there any prohibitions or anything that would be HIPAA protected and can't be used with AI?
Yeah, so part of the, so when we look at a tiered approach here, that's something we outlined, like the, anything that has the PHI, yeah, whatever, it could be a tier three, like high-risk usage. So that is outlined within this of, you know, if you're falling under a certain, if you're putting it under certain data or you fall under certain compliance structures, like Sheriff's Office, Vasigis, or any of these different departments that have volunteered ones, I might go to a tier three approach, which means they're asking a risk assessment done, and we don't feel at this time comfortable putting it in the public, in, in any kind of public engine or anything like that, public model.
Okay.
So.
And that's repeated twice in the policy, so it'll show up in tier two. And then we also have the bullet point 3.3 specifically for privacy and security, which is. There's so many compliance regulations out there, so we want to make sure we're abiding by them.
I'm someone that still does remain skeptical about what AI is gonna do to our culture, civilization of the country, particularly the environmental impacts of having just more and more data centers, as you're seeing here in Iowa. But I think that this policy though, because, but the fact is that it is here, it's, it's integrated into all sorts of software that we already use. So I think that this does provide pretty good guardrails. So I like that you went more detailed and created these tiers. Things that are just absolutely not acceptable or high-risk, or things that would need approval. So I think that you guys did put a lot of thought into this policy, we appreciate that.
Yeah, the goal was to have something that's quickly referenced. So like with the tier list, like something that somebody can actually pull up and go like, hey, which one is this fall under? And like, what do I need to do from here? As opposed to having something in general, it's like, okay, I don't really understand whether I can or can't do this, and I gotta go talk to somebody. This could be something doing easy, you can look at at their desk and be like, okay, where exact, what exactly is this?
You mentioned the training sessions, are you doing those like with individuals or small groups? Or how is that being done?
Kind of, well, the above, I would say. So yeah, we did one larger one, like all, the public health. And then we've done a bunch of departments, different ones, and we've had a few with individuals who wanted to know more or had specific use cases in mind. So yeah, we've done, we've done quite a few, I'd say all of them so far, so.
We just had a couple of sessions yesterday with the sheriff's department, recorded his entire department in, in two sessions. So it's, it's, it's really, it's, it's great to see that they, you know, how they can possibly use this for additional efficiencies in their jobs. Like I said, like, so it's not for everyone, but if you can find it to be more efficient in your specific role, you know, we do encourage it. And of course, we want to follow the, the rules and the guardrails, just to make sure that everything is safe in terms of data privacy, so.
You're having another smaller group, I'd like to know if I can send in a one or two.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, one person, five people, we don't care, we love, we love.
I don't want to see, but if you got a small group or something.
We have one that we're getting scheduled, so I'll add to it.
Yeah, okay. Perfect. You guys are all one. Well, maybe two at a time.
We're not deliberating.
Oh, there you go.
We're learning. So what is next steps for you then? I mean, you put it on today for discussion, or you think you've got it finalized as far as the, the policy then?
We would like that, obviously, it's, it's the board decision. We, we wanted to have this discussion with you guys and then, and take some time, look it over, make sure there are any red flags or anything you notice that that might be missing. Like I said, this is, this is a working document that, that will always be updated and always revised. And so, and then if you feel that you guys are comfortable with moving forward, adopting this, maybe we can be back in a week or two and for consideration.
We got policy review tomorrow, so I think we have a couple for tomorrow and we can move forward for this issue.
It's gonna be in a couple of weeks or?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. And if you have any questions, of course, you know, don't hesitate to ask us. We, we love talking about this stuff and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
You want to move on to the website? Thank you.
All right.
So the discussion will come to the website, website committee.
All right. So. Morning board, I'm back.
Your name, Hardman.
That's right, how are you IT director? So, real quick, I will like to give a quick history on the website committee. So, back in about 2000, December 24, we formed a committee because we, we felt that our, our current website, which is hosted by Civic Plus, it could be more efficient, and, and we wanted to kind of just test the blockers and see what else is there. And, and so we formed a committee consisting of the, the members on, on the screen here. We met, oh, well, quite a few times over the span, like, over the span of, well, over a year, right? And then at least eight times, so. And we, we started off by kind of evaluating what our current website has for features, what we like, what we disliked about it, kind of gauge some internal feedback. We also looked at other websites, just kind of seeing what, what other counties, other municipalities, their websites, what they look like, what kind of features we wanted. And then we kind of created the, we created this list of all, all of our wish list items. And then so the thing that, that was big for us was the agenda item. You know, we, we have an agenda item, and I'll call it agenda manager. I think it could be more robust with our, with our current host, and so that's one thing we would love to see. Obviously, mobile optimization is a big thing because everyone is looking at webpages from their phone. We do have mobile optimization for, for our current site, but it could be better. I mean, the theme is, it could be better. And so, we, we engaged with stakeholders, we did a lot of research with vendors, we reached out to them, just kind of a, kind of a question, what else, you know, what can, what can you offer? Liked a lot of data, thank you for Gabby for getting some of the backend information, a lot of the analytics. We developed an internal and an external survey, so we, we polled all of our employees, we also polled the public. We took all that information and that became our final product, which was an RFP, a draft RFP. And we had Mr. Tryon look it over, so, so we do have a draft RFP ready, if that is the direction we would go down the road. And that was the intent of the committee, was to look at all, all the angles and then develop an RFP with, of course, the board's permission to, to go out for that, if that's, that's what you guys so choose. So that's where we're at. And so, fast forward to today, Gabby kind of touched on this last week with the new ADA compliance requirements. The original goal was to kind of have this project take, bring this to you, and, and if you guys approved, it would happen right in July 1, which is a fairly aggressive schedule. And so with the, with the, with the ADA requirements, we don't think we're gonna be able to hit that. So we are, we are just kind of having discussion, presenting the board with a couple of options to think about. So option one would be to just kind of stay with Civic Plus, work with the vendor, maybe see if we can address some of, some of the shortcomings, some of the features that we want to see. You know, check with other departments, see if there's anything that we can kind of maybe refine to, to, to correct with the current experience. And then just, you know, plan for the redesign. So every three years of Civic Plus, you are allowed a redesign and no additional cost. So next fiscal year, we will be allowed that. So it almost feels like we just did it, and, and I think it was about two years. Yeah, so about a year and a half, two-ish years ago, we, we did the revamp. And it, it was much needed, and, and I think everyone, their initial feedback was, we love the look. So we would be privy to another one of those. Option two would be to kind of delay the whole project, allow us time for Gabby and myself to kind of work with the existing website, make sure we have everything up to ADA compliance, because that will take a lot of work. We have to go through almost every single page and, and find toothpaste. So push the RFP back, maybe go live a, a year later. The other thing that I did not catch right away, we always assumed that the renewal for Civic Plus was at the end of June. It is actually at the end of May. So it doesn't quite align with the July one, that kind of complicates things a little bit, being, being a month off. And I've mentioned prioritizing the ADA compliance. The other thing I have to mention is, as we, if, if we were to go to RFP and we receive bids from respective vendors, they will also need time to build out a brand new website. And so part of the reasoning why we do the ADA portion is, we are getting our website to the point that we, we want it to be. And then from there, it'll make it an easier transition for a potential vendor to, to take all of our pages and produce them into, into a new page, new website. As we have kind of reached out to some of the, reached out to some of the vendors, they did, they did say that it will take anywhere from six to nine months to build that website. Also, it would, it would, there, there could be an upfront cost to do so. So budget-wise, the IT department covers the renewals for the, the website hosting. However, it was not budgeted for the build. Now, it is possible that if we were to go RFP. a potential vendor could bake that cost into the July one renewal of the next fiscal year, but it would still be a bump up in, in budget. And that would something we would have to bring up during budget management time. And obviously, you know, that would be for approval, of course, so. So these are the options we'd like to bring up to you guys and kind of just see your thoughts on, on what you, what do you think of these two options?
What's Civic Plus cost now?
I think we are paying fifteen or sixteen thousand a year. And that is, that is one hundred percent hosting, they handle everything. And I will say, it doesn't give us full access to everything. There's certain things on the page that, on the site that we can't edit, like colors, we couldn't edit. We had to pay them to change the color palette for the new logo. But the day-to-day, you know, individual page stuff, we can, we can edit, so.
Were you to pay them to change the color scheme?
We did. I, I, I was not thrilled about that. But, you know, it is what it is. It's, it's how it was set up from before, so.
That's not necessarily a common question.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Previous website I had to deal with, there was a lot of extra costs. Were you making any changes with it?
And I'm guessing that's a safety guardrail, so we don't break the website as well. I, I'm sure there's some protections in place so that, you know, we're not the ones responsible taking those.
Al, there was a big, big fight when I had to deal with the website in previous life. There was a part where we wanted more control and they wouldn't give it to us to have a site that gave us more hands-on abilities to make changes. Are we to the point where Civic Plus, we kind of maxed out our abilities to do what we need for what it can do?
I, I think it gives us enough permission to do what we need to do to get by. Our biggest issues are, there are, it is confusing to use the backend. It, like, a simple change, like changing an email, you know, and Gabby can attest to this. It should be really simple. I should be able to click on it and change it, and we can't. Sometimes it's a little trickier. And I feel like I need a contact support just to help us make an update, which should never be the case. It should be very easy and intuitive to use. The other thing is, is the backend performance is really slow. Like, I can click to log into the backend and it might take three minutes. Well, I'm not joking, three minutes for me to load that page. So, and I'm not the only one. I, I, I'm wondering if it was just me, but I've checked with other counties who have Civic Plus and they say the same thing, there are performance issues. You know, with option one, I said, address functionality issues with the current vendor. We can bring it to their attention. I'll be honest, I'm not, I'm not holding my breath that they can address this. I think this is something that has accumulated over time in, in the backend coding that may be not easy for them to address. They would almost have to rewrite the code, which I don't think they're gonna do when they have so many, you know, hundreds of thousands of customers. That'd be a huge disruption.
What are you hearing from other counties that have others, another service?
They, you know, like the ones that specifically moved away from Civic Plus to another vendor, they were very happy that they made the move. And I, and this is not really a bashing Civic Plus thing. I don't mean to be that way, but just, just being honest. They, they really have been happy, like Neapolitan is, is a popular option. So the elections website is currently hosted by Neapolitan. And Karen, I can let you speak to it, but you've already mentioned you've had a great experience with them. I've had to, the opportunity to speak with them at conferences and they are very, and they're local, by the way. They, I think they're out of Des, or Des Moines, okay. And one of the, I think one of the persons that works at this number, so.
Well, actually, the person we work with directly is Sam Hudson, so even in the county.
There you go. So they've been, they've been very forthcoming with the information. I actually, they were one of the, the vendors that I reached out to just asking theoretical questions about potential RFP. And they were very, very open, just providing honest answers. And so they, they've said, for them, it would be like a six-month deal time. So, and I'm not saying, you know, obviously, this would need to be a fair process. It would be an RFP. So if you so choose to go that route, and then you would just consider all the prospective vendors.
Is there, maybe it's more upfront cost, but maybe there's some long-term savings or some, just saving, savings of staff time to get all these sites under the same service?
Sure, and that was, that was brought up because we, we do have, I think Gabby mentioned in the last, in last week's slides, there, there are five current websites. And there could be some cost savings by consolidating them. Now, it's a little tricky because they have different hosts and they have different contract terms. But in the end, I mean, if that is, if that is the wish of the board and other departments and if we can make it work, yeah, I can definitely see cost savings in consolidating them to one host. The other thing is, yes, would be efficiency. If, if there's a, a better interface in the backend, we could do our jobs quicker, easier. So yeah, and other features. Now, can I promise that it'd be cheaper? I don't know. Without seeing the bids, I, I have no idea. I can tell you some of the prospective vendors, they're, they're bigger names in Civic Plus, and historically, they probably come in a little higher on their bids. But, you know, without seeing them or going to that point and seeing them, like, I can't really comment on that.
If we go to RFP, how many different vendors would you see wanting to give us price?
I can see easily five to six vendors right away.
Would you agree with five to six?
There, there's a lot of players in the game, and like, more than we even knew as we were doing research, so we're, we're kind of surprised by that. But that's a good thing. I mean, they're, they're, you know, they're vying, they'd be vying for our business and we could evaluate our services. And what's great is we have a lot of contacts in, in counties in this industry, so that they, yeah, and if you combine municipalities and counties, a lot of customers, we can get a lot of feedback and critiques to it, and pros and cons, so.
If we go to RFP, I mean, we could do an option one, where there's, like, the option one is just the county website, but then an option two would be all five of them?
Sure, that's, that's a possibility. Yeah, we could, we could write the, I mean, the, the RFP is in, is pretty much a final draft, but it absolutely could be adjusted easily to, to accommodate any, any decision you guys.
So far, the timeline's been by enough costs.
Huh?
The costs are what's gonna be critical too, as far as which way we go.
It is, because I, I don't know what like an upfront cost is.
No, I don't.
I mean, I think Gabby did say from one, you said from one colleague to budget high, and then, and when I say high, it's high to me, fifty to sixty thousand, that's just for the build.
Build in first year.
Oh, build in first year. And that, that's a lot. That is a lot of money. And so, that is a tough decision and. Yeah, that's a different topic. So, but, I mean, another vendor could come in as low as ten, twenty for the build and then roughly about the same for, for the first year's service or subsequent year's service, so. Things, things to consider. Unfortunately, we, you know, I can ask for, for quotes, but they, they won't give to us until we officially go out to RFP, so.
No, but we need to have some estimated costs, I think, just like when you budget, if you're gonna, before you go out for RFPs, you have to.
And I can.
Some more ideas and bids.
And we can certainly reach out to some of the vendors and see if they're willing to give us some estimated costs. And we can also check with other counties and cities to see what, if they're willing to divulge what they pay for, for their, what posting services we could.
You said it should be public information.
Yeah, yeah, get some more. And we may have a few of that. Yeah, those stats are ready, so we can pile that, get that taken.
See what others have done, just something gives an idea of the timeline. It's like the ADA is gonna be a heavy lift.
It is. Lots of small work, but we'll, we'll get there.
So the, the, the main issues with the current website, can you recap those again for me?
Sure, really the, the performance issue. We want, we wanted to perform quickly. It should just work like, supposedly it doesn't. We want more robust features, so, and then Lori can, can speak to this too. She, she is in the, our current website the most. She, she deals with the agenda and I've worked with the agenda manager. And I feel like it could be so much better. I mean, if we're working towards more transparency, we want to make sure that our agendas are formatted in a very nice way. It's a lot of work. I mean, sure, it can just handle uploading an agenda. That's fine, that's easy. But it doesn't conveniently attach every document that is going to be discussed. And, and these are public documents that, you know, anyone can see. And currently, unless Lori does a lot of work of putting them in every individual document and linking them like, like you're writing it, like you're doing HTML and website hosting, it's a lot of work for it to attach those documents on there, so it's easily accessible by simply clicking. Just from watching some of the demos and I, like, Neapolitan, for, for example, I've seen one of their pages and I've seen the agenda backend. It is exactly what I would want. Very easy, all those documents are ready to go. Anyone can click on it. Because currently, you'd have to request from the board, like, let's just say you want to see the, the copy of that contract. We would have to send it to that, to that person, when it should just be linked and readily available. And so, that would add to transparency.
And you had these discussions with Civic Plus?
We, we have. I mean, it's kind of awkward conversations to have.
Well, it shouldn't be. I mean, really, it's just like services that you're looking at as a customer and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The place to consider for the future, so.
Yeah, I should walk in.
I actually talked to them quite a bit and I, we have a meeting, a potential meeting to talk about like the, our agenda pain points. Because I just reached out to her and let her know that, you know, this was one of the issues that we had. And so Lori and I planned to set up a time to meet with them and, and talk about it with them, so. And I found, he's, he's right. I mean, when VA moved and I had to try to change the address on the FAR column, it was buried in the most obscure place and it took me probably fifteen, twenty minutes to find it. And it was just silly. And we had something similar with a page that HR wanted to update and it was just not in the same place that it is for other pages. So there, there, there's some backend frustration that takes a while. I, I kind of make myself cheatly, cheat sheets as I go, just so that I, to be more efficient the next time. But, but they are very responsive. I mean, I've, I've had good luck with getting good tech support from them and, and quick tech support. I think one of the bigger, the other pain points visually is just like, the website just looks dated even though it's only a couple of years old. And so just having a more visual look, but that's not something that we could get with, with Civic Plus in our redesign. But it might, I don't know what their pricing is, like if you want to change your setup, you might have to pay more, you know, for that anyway. I'm not sure how, I've never been through a redesign, so I'm not certain. But there are, when I checked in my communicators groups on social media, there's like three to four really big, regular users that governments use for their websites. Civic Plus is one of the biggest. And then there's a couple others.
I think they're almost exclusively counties. No, they have two, no, they have two municipalities.
City, I've seen your policy with Civic Plus.
That's right. Local government, sorry.
Can I just, just for sake of conversation and give you a background of why we created our own or went with a different website was exactly because of this. During election time, sometimes we need to get something out there really quickly. And it's time sensitive, obviously, because we only have the one day to put on election. And it was impossible to get any updates out on the same day. It was taking twenty-four, forty-eight hours, so obviously that was not gonna work for us. The other thing that was really important, the lookup function for voters to find where they went to go vote, every election broke. So it might work for one out of four people. And that just can't happen. So the amount of calls that we got from the public about our website and how it was not user-friendly, we just, we, at least at the time, there wasn't a plan to go with a different website. So it wasn't that we wanted to just have our own, but it was definitely a need for the public to move to Neapolitan. I haven't seen these other websites. I can only speak to my experience, but we are able to edit our own content and it is very, 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 very easy to do. And so I really like that component, especially, like I said, when with elections, we're working in that one-day time constraint. So it's very user-friendly, both from our end and from a public's, public's end. We've gotten so many great compliments on our website. And I can only, I mean, I'm happy to, well, you guys can see the cost, but I can only share, you know, obviously, this is just one very small piece. But I believe it was at most five thousand for us to move. And they did the whole build. They took all of our, we didn't have to do anything, which was amazing. They took all of our data and then created the new website for us. And we only pay a thousand dollars for our annual.
A thousand?
A thousand.
A thousand dollars?
Yes, I just got the bill. Now, this is just elections, so obviously it's gonna be higher for the county that we pay a thousand dollars a year.
Think of every document we've ever hosted on our website and that's like the scale of what our migration would be.
We have five hundred likes per year, you know?
That's no big deal. A lot.
Any idea where, not to catch up, Gar, but with like our user, page views?
Oh, I could send you that today. Yeah, I don't know it off the top of my head, but yes, I could, I could certainly send that to you today.
Just curious, like, and I expect there are certain times of the year where that would differ.
Yes.
I think, does treasury have the highest traffic though?
Treasury recorder, like, I can show you the pages that get hit the most often and I can show you the number of users and how long they stay. Yeah, I can send you all of that.
That would be great, thank you. I guess to me, it's not like we should be going out for RFP, but.
It sounds like me too, but yeah.
Because if we go out for RFP, is that what you said we should?
No, it's starting to sound like we should, but.
Even if we still do that and if it doesn't make sense, can still pull back and not commit to anything right now.
Oh, yeah, right until the last minute. After you've done all the work for us, we'll do, we'll consider, we'll think of, yeah, don't like it so much.
Yep, and, and if you guys would like to see the draft RFP we created, I'd be happy to send it to you, just so you can look it over. Like I said, it's, I'm thankful that you guys allow us to have this discussion. It's, it's been, it's been a journey to get, to get to this point. And, but, you know, ADA kind of threw, threw a curveball at us, but that's okay. We're gonna, we're gonna get through that. And then, and then maybe just have another discussion at some, down the road and just, you know, gauge your thoughts. And we'd be happy to answer any other questions and provide any other information.
Yeah, because the RFP is probably at some point, depending on what the time is, if it still stays with that timeline, whether it's gonna stay to something that'd be needed or you'd be looking at if you decide to go out at all, so.
And then we'll, we'll try to get the, the estimate of the cost. Yeah, that would be important to kind of gauge that.
I'm almost done, I promise. So Civic Plus has been responsive and as far as like problem solving, they're helping get stuff done. How, it seems like it would be too easy for them to like allow you guys to do certain things.
Well, I think, to Al, I'll say this too, like, they, they have that in, in place so that people don't go in and break the website. Or like if you had a lot of users in the county that could contribute to the website, and we actually kind of have this now. If you look, certain pages look different than other pages, that's what you don't want. Like, you want kind of a more uniform look. And so, yes, to like the color palette, how you put things into place. Like, I had to ask them to add the Google Translate button because that was not something, that wasn't a widget I could add. But they did it quickly within the day. So, but yeah, the colors, that was kind of a pain because we knew exactly what colors we wanted and to have to pay for it was, was frustrating. But I would like to see whether we do a redesign of Civic Plus or a new website, just a more visually interesting, engaging page that, that is just a lot more friendly to use and, and people enjoy it more.
Have there been complaints?
Not if like from the public or?
Just as far as user interface and user friendliness? I mean, I, I like the site. I find it very simple to navigate. And if you haven't picked up by now, not very tech savvy.
I could go back to our survey results because we did do a survey, as, as Al mentioned, on Facebook to see if we got any specific points that people mentioned. I think that staff say, you know, things are buried. You know, there's, they talk about for, for accessibility and, and I can't remember, Al, if you mentioned this. But you want as few, as few clicks as possible to get to things. And sometimes on certain situations, like you have to go two, three clicks in to get to, to what you're trying to, to do. And so things like that, just making it bury things less, make it more accessible, put it out in the open a little bit better.
And when, when we did the initial redesign, we did keep, they did ask us that and then we did keep that in mind. So we put the buttons for like treasury, debt center, you know, the highest traffic links. But that's only just the first layer, you know? And, and there was so much years and years of pages done, kind of, it's kind of a lot less a little bit. And, and so we'd like to standardize all of that, get ADA compliant, get it all standardized and then make it an easy transition potentially in the future.
I think this has been the last one. What makes it not ADA compliant now? What makes it not ADA compliant now?
Well, the bones of the website are ADA compliant, and the bones of all five of the extra websites that we have for the county are all ADA compliant. But it's, um, like the PDFs that I mentioned, they, um, not all the PDFs are accessible, and if they are front-facing and people can still use them, then they have to be made accessible. So, there's like five hundred of those. Um, it, some pages, uh, people didn't use the headings, like, the lot, the headings that have been set up at, in the code to be headings, and so if you're using a screen reader, and it ju- it knows to jump from heading to heading so that you can better navigate it. Um, if you haven't used those, then the navigation is a problem, and that's on us. That's not something Civic Plus did, that's something that someone in the back thought, oh, I like, I wanna bold it because I don't like this chunky font, which I agree, I don't like the chunky font, but, um, that, that, they've done that instead, and so then it might not be seen as a header. So, this is just kind of going through, there's a whole checklist for the, um, they call it the website. I'm not gonna remember what the C stand, continent, maybe, accessibility guidelines. There's a whole checklist that, um, we have to go through and comply with. And our deadline, um, you weren't here last week, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so, um, we talked about this last week, but our deadline is sooner, because the county is over fifty thousand. And so, um, City of Cedar Falls has until, um, April of twenty twenty-seven. Uh, City of Waterloo and us, we have to be, um, we have to have a plan for compliance. No website will ever be a hundred percent compliant, but we have to have a plan for compliance. So, um, like Al said, if somebody requests a document that they can't use with their assistant device, how will we get that to them? And then also, what is going to be our process for making the website compatible? And when we were talking about going to RFP, and the process of going to RFP, and also making the website, um, accessibility compliant, I think Al saw my head explode. So, so we just thought, really, we need to do one thing well, and do that, and then move on to the next. Because we, it's really gonna be hard to talk with department heads about how they wanna make their pages better and more accessible, and what can we take off, and what do we need to add, and also then be planning for a new website build.
Gotcha. Thank you.
It's like, really, the PDF documents, right? Like, when we take our results and we just scan them in, those are probably, if somebody's using an assist, I don't.
Assistant device, yeah.
Yeah, they probably are not gonna be able to access that, so we need a better way.
The recorder's office has a lot of forms and applications that you can fill out, and I would venture to say that half of them aren't accessible. One thing we've noticed is, um, you can make a PDF a fillable form on your desktop, but it's not a fillable form if you're on mobile. So, there's just, there's just so much.
Didn't know.
Yeah, yeah, wherever possible, we'll link to the person who creates the information, and then that's on them to make sure it's compliant.
Yeah.
But that just takes going through each page.
If the state has documents, we'll just link to their website. That's where you can find the official file?
I have nothing else.
Any, any other questions for us?
For the ADA compliance, April twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth.
So, it's, it's coming up.
Sure is.
So, we got a, we got a heavy left here to, to do, but we'll, we'll get to it.
I am, um, I have meetings on my calendar, I think it's like every other week, with Mica from Public Health, 'cause she's, um, she's a former compliance person, so she's on the ball with this as well. And then we also have, um, quarterly meetings with Lynn County, Johnson County, and the City of Marion. We've kind of made our own little comms group, um, talking about this, too. And Lynn County just went through a rebuild with, um, with their vendor, I think it's Civic Plus or Johnson. I think.
And I guess if there are any features that you guys would like to, to see in a potential new website, please let us know. Anything that you've noticed, um, that you'd like to see improved, we'd, we'd love the feedback. And, uh, make sure we include that on our list of, uh, things for the, in the RFP. Yeah. We, we think we had a pretty good list in the RFP, but, you know, maybe we can always squeeze in more. There's, there's no, uh, there's no space limit, so.
Well, no, one thing that's keen to me was a list of our townships, and then clerks and trustees in our townships.
And I think, uh, that's an example of things being buried. That's available on the elections website, but it could also be, um, somewhere else that's maybe also makes sense. But, yeah, um, right now, you can find it under the elections website, under elected officials.
Something new today.
Yes, you can export all the information, too.
Okay.
Any other questions for us? Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The time is ten fifty-six, and we are having the hearing of proposed ordinance. I'm sorry? The hearing of proposed ordinance number one four eight establishing the election precincts in Blackhawk County, Iowa, replacing in its entirety the present election precinct ordinances, number one forty-four and one forty-five quota ordinances. Is there a motion to receive and place a proof of publication?
So moved.
Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Both same sign. Motion to waive the first reading, as notice was published on August thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, from a water, the Cedar Falls Currier, in accordance with requirements of the Code of Iowa, and publication was approved in the proposed ordinance of the Blackhawk County, Iowa, to establishing the election precincts in Blackhawk County, Iowa, replacing in its entirety the present election precinct ordinances, number one forty-four and one forty-five quota ordinances.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Item three, motion to close the hearing, as oral and written comments are received and placed on file.
So moved, second.
Were there any written comments?
No written comments.
Nobody?
Nope.
No, I mean, any comments or anything you care to make?
Um, the only thing that I will add, um, just for explanation, uh, so, we do need to update our ordinance with just moving those two people, um, but, uh, the explanation of this, so, looking back through redistricting, we had two different ordinances, um, in regards to redistricting, and so it was a really good opportunity to just now combine them, so that we only have the one. 'Cause I can't promise you when I come into redistricting, if I'm still here in twenty thirty, that I'm gonna, again, remember, we have this, the two separate ones. So, it's just a great opportunity to get everything under one ordinance.
And you said they were just two individuals that moved, can you, do you recall where they moved from?
Yes, I do. So, they were in the Cedar Falls Township, so this has to do with Cedar Falls City annexing, um, some land in the Cedar Falls Township. So, um, it was just an unfortunate timing where they did it, they did this, um, annexing during redistricting, so they didn't have the full census blocks when they were creating the new annex. So, they left this much, um, of a census block, and so, that was, it's actually, nobody even lives there. It was two residents in one household, but the house is gone now. Who knows where those two people went? Um, but because it was in two, the, two different legislative districts, we had to create this one ballot just for them. Um, and so, I had asked them to please annex the rest of that, and they finally did that. So, that's, that's the background on that. So, um, move two people into the city ordinance, if that's where they, if that's where they want to go. I wouldn't know that, and we won't know that until the next redistricting happens. So, as far as really changing any of our precincts that we're submitting to LSA for them to draw the districts, it's not gonna change things in that regard.
We'll see what regard, they will change things, but not in this.
As far as this, yeah.
Would that affect their property taxes, though, too, as far as paying, if they weren't paying to the state?
Well, the house is now gone, so really, it's just land that they, they're, they wanted the land 'cause they're redeveloping, uh, industrial parts, so the, the house is gone.
Actually, I know what section you're talking about.
Yeah, that's southern, um.
A few newer.
Um, no, actually, the other way.
Yeah.
Like closer to Hudson.
Yeah.
So, this just really coincided for us internally.
Couple ways, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the motion, if you have any further questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Item four, resolution to suspend the rules requiring the board supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two meetings.
So moved, second.
The resolution, his answers, your names.
Paul. Kurtenbach.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes. Item five, ordinance, ordinance adoption. The proposed ordinance number one four eight establishing the election precincts in Blackhawk County, Iowa, replacing in its entirety the present election precinct ordinances, numbers one four four and one four five quota ordinances, be adopted, and that if adopted, it shall be known as ordinance number one four eight.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, it's, his answers, your names.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Kurtenbach.
Yes.
Paul. Brandt.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes. Item twelve, any reports or information from the board?
Uh, just gonna report again that, uh, just, I will be holding a town hall meeting next Wednesday with township clerks, trustees have been invited. Uh, we'll be doing a corrective or updated flyer. Uh, I'm gonna be making phone calls to each of the township clerks as well. And do appreciate the, uh, folks stepping forward and volunteering. TJ with the assessor's office during this presentation, Sheriff Neff, and then Kathy as well. Uh, with this, we'll be making notice that this is not a event from the county, nor are we speaking on behalf of the board. Uh, we got the clarification from the attorney yesterday on certain things with this, so we will be making sure that that is handled correctly.
So, you said you're moving it to a different date?
No.
Oh.
Monday, it's Monday.
Monday, you said one day. Oh, okay, same day.
Yep.
Same location.
Uh, and I do, I do want to again, again, thank the departments for funding the funds for leadership training. I think that's huge, uh, for the county, and again, for our staff.
Any other information? Tavis, I assume you'll remain quiet, so nothing to come aboard the board. All right, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Both same sign, be a center.
Can I ask you guys a question?